This call regular city council meeting order for the city of Galena, Galena, Illinois, Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four. Take roll call, Mary.
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Sagman?
Here.
Westmeyer?
Here.
Wehan?
Here.
Burner?
Here. We had informed next to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the state. I surrender my allegiance to the state. One nation under the power of the letter of the Constitution for all.
Yeah.
I do my best. You can call.
This is why, Jan, you don't have a hat.
Okay, then let's have a move ahead and item number twenty-four C dash zero three four six reports of standing committees tonight. We have none. Let's move ahead to item number twenty-four C dash zero three four seven citizens comments not to exceed fifteen minutes as an agenda item and not more than three minutes per speaker. If anybody wants to address the council, step up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
I'm Peggy Storitz. I live at one twelve Old Maple Court in Galena. The proposed mega resort on the east side is a really, really bad idea. Every morning I walk my dog on both sides of the Galena River and I chat with the tourists. I love them. I ask them what it is about Galena that attracts them. Number one, small town. Number two, history. Few things could be more destructive to our small town charm and to our history than this proposed mega resort. It will increase overcrowding. It will increase parking problems. It will commercialize our town. Every recent census shows the population of Galena is declining. Now it's down to three thousand. Every estimate shows the number of tours is growing exponentially. Now it's well over one million per year. The city needs to listen to the taxpayers and consider the price that we are paying for losing our town to your desire for more and more tourists. Every resident who orders the proposed development is opposed to it, and yet you have ignored their pleas. Why? You've used one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our tax dollars to pay attorneys so a wealthy non-resident can hope to make a profit on this town. How do you justify that? Are you aware that most developers covered the legal costs for the city so the taxpayers don't have to? Why are we paying Hooten's bills? We're not the multimillionaires here. You've said over and over that the city will get numerous opportunities to review this development as it progresses. Well, you're wrong. Judge Hay in his comments said you're wrong. He said you will not get another chance after you've signed everything unless you put in writing that you will get chances at these different stages, you won't. So currently, the way it stands, you won't. Um, Hooten can do anything that isn't specifically restricted and he doesn't have to do anything that isn't specifically required. And oh, boy, does he have a lot of options to do some very serious damage if he so wishes. His representatives said that the employees would live in dorms. Where are these dorms? Why didn't anyone ask? Are these dorms going to be constructed on city property? How big will they be? Who will live there year round? How much will it cost the city to support this multitude of minimum wage employees? What will be their medical costs for us? How much more traffic will they create? What demands will these dorms place on our infrastructure? Could we ask? The plan shows a winery, no details as to its size, none. There is no way to over emphasize how many hundreds and thousands of gallons of water are required by a winery. It also produces hundreds of thousands of gray water that has to be removed. Traffic is required to supply a winery. Employees are needed to work there. Won't this employee, this winery, on top of all these proposed restaurants and cabins and events, require major increases in our water infrastructure? Someone who's knowledgeable about city engineer has told me it will. You should get an engineer to do an estimate. Put aside your adulation for the project designer and just look at this project objectively. Get an attorney who specializes in commercial zoning agreements. You owe more to our people.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I'm Ted Williams, five thirty-five South High Street, and I know most of you. It's an honor to address all of you, and thank you. I appreciate what you do for the city. I know it's a lot of hard work, often things. In this case, however, I do have to stand up and just state that Frank Einswiler once said, "The trick is to attract tourists without becoming a tourist trap." Unfortunately, we are all running, already running at below standard occupancy rates at most of our hotels. We frankly don't need more occupancy. We've already attracted people to the level that our infrastructure is struggling to accommodate it. Um, typically, our tourism levels are at all time highs, and building and adding on to more of it is only going to deeply affect our culture. And this is what I would ask of you tonight. Not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law when it comes to making this decision. It's not always about the dollars or the cents. It's more about the quality of life that we and the people of Galena have to endure to accommodate a level of success that has limits. I think this goes a little bit beyond it. It's been said that Galena is a beach town without a beach or a college town without a college. There's a uniqueness to this place that makes it different and more special than just about any other place uh in the U.S., frankly, and people come here, as we just heard from our previous speaker, and I work with tourists. I hear it all day long, all year long. Please consider the impact of this project and the negative impact it likely will have on our quality of life here and vote to keep Galena the wonderful place that it is. We will thank you for it, and we will reelect you for taking a stand up. Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Farlow, four eleven Meeker Street in Galena. And this is regarding the appeal of court versus city of Galena litigation. Uh, looks to me like it's more follows added to the excessive amount already paid to enable a Parker project that the majority of Galena residents oppose. As former owners of the farmer's guest house for many years, my wife Kathy and I, we made a lot of really great friendships out of a lot of our guests. So many of our former guest friends continue to visit Galena and overnight stay, they eat, they shop in Galena as well. One hundred percent of them, after finding out what part the Parker means, said it would be an overall detriment to the character of the Galena destination. So over the course of many years, after we sold the guest house, Kathy and I continue to meet new people. We meet a lot of residents that are already here and quite a few tourists. New tourists will ask about Parker Parker signs that they've seen around town. After a brief explanation, they say that this kind of enterprise does not fit in with the present character of Galena. Not a single one thought it would be an asset to our destination. Over many meetings and the public hearings that Kathy and I have attended, ninety percent of the speakers opposed the Parker project. It went forward anyway with this regard to the majority. I can go on and on with this, and we've all heard all of these arguments for quite a while, so I won't do that. But my recommendation is to vote against an appeal, save additional wasteful dollars, and allow the Parker to pass away peacefully.
Janet Frohler, four oh one voters. As elected public servant, you have a fiduciary responsibility to act in the best interest of those you are serving rather than your own or private party's interest. To not have discussed the reasoning for the city to potentially file an appeal separate from Mr. Hooten, spending taxpayers' money on defense of a lawsuit to benefit a wealthy developer private party seems to be in clear violation of that tenet. We as citizens who voted have an implicit expectation of trust in you. Our elected officials, with the definition of trust being the act of placing belief in another person without control over them, making oneself vulnerable or investing resources with the expectation that you will reciprocate by acting in our interest. With this re-trust that you will follow all laws and regulations that ensure equal opportunities for everyone, not misuse public office for personal gain, act impartially and not give preferential preferential treatment to any individual organization, protect and conserve public property, conduct yourself in a way that maintains public trust in the authority you represent, be responsive to public input as well as a duty to monitor and gather data on the implementation of decisions, and if that data, not just anecdotes, but hard data, shows a decision isn't having its intended effect, you have a duty to revisit and modify as necessary. I'm fairly certain that what I say tonight will have no bearing on your already decided vote this evening. But what I would ask is at the very least, when you have an opportunity to reflect upon this crucial time that Galena finds itself in, that you do everything in each of your own powers to reflect, mend, and gain back the trust that's been lost. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Bogus. I live at five nineteen Fourth Street, and I also would like to speak to the Parker litigation issue. Um, quite a few years ago, I lived in Austin, Texas, and I was elected president of my homeowner homeowners association. So they elected president and board, and our job was to carry out the business of the association and of the neighborhood. And somewhere in my term, I thought, wow, you know, it'd be really great for us to build a pavilion in our thirty-five acre homeowners park. And this park was just a treasure for all of us. But we realized it was going to be a contentious idea because nothing like that had ever happened. So we contacted, we wrote a letter and sent out a survey to all the property owners. And we said, this is what we're thinking. It's just, we're asking, um, what do you think? We had a architect's drawing. We had expenses. We had, you know, what we thought was a good idea, and we sent that out. And some people were like, man, you guys are spending a lot of money to send this out. We're like, well, we don't know what people want. So we sent it out and had a deadline, came back. Um, I was a little surprised. People were not in favor of this. In fact, the people who lived along the park said, I don't want to look at a pavilion. The people who lived on the road to the park said, I don't want all that increased traffic. And then the people who weren't there full time said, I don't want to pay for this. And we were like, oh, good thing we asked. And so I'm thinking about you guys. You were elected. You all have parts of Galena that you represent. And maybe it's time with this contentious thing, and it is contentious. I mean, there's a lawsuit, to check in with the citizens of Galena, find out what they want. And if if they're opposed to it, okay, not the time for it. And maybe you'll be surprised, and maybe I'll be surprised. No, but you'll be for it. But anyway, I think it would be worth doing. Thank you.
Sims, Boho, Rocky Hill Road, Rice Township. Um, three councils ago, I brought forward a fact sheet from the Illinois Department of Transportation about Fourth Street, Highway twenty pertaining to the Parker program. That sheet brings up certain facts that you all have had and read. And after that, then, the council had decided to put on their website local roads for safety plan. And while the local roads for safety plan is a great idea, that Fourth Street, Highway twenty is already state federally flagged as a critical intersection. So I ask you tonight, since you have known since the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty three, that was part of the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan, that both in twenty twenty-one and twenty, excuse me, twenty oh one and twenty oh two, uh, four accidents were at that intersection. And now that intersection has twenty-four accidents, and five of those are serious accidents. So I ask you now that you have went ahead and put the local roads for safety plan, whose position, whose authority, who is going to tell the schoolchildren about that intersection? I have asked the school to move ahead on that. That intersection there is where the school bus goes through and where all the families' children drive through with their siblings to go to school. And that is a critical intersection, one of thirty-seven. Now, mind you, it's on a piece of paper that I handed out to you. And then you went ahead and you used this, that you went along with Mr. Varansky and said, well, as long as the police, the fire, and the EMS all agree with this, we do. Well, Mr. Varansky never brought this paper in front of the zoning. Mr. Varansky never brought this paper in front of two meetings in front of the council. And I checked, Mr. Varansky never brought this paper in front of the police department. Mr. Varansky never brought this paper in front of the fire department, the EMS. He sat on it and buried it. And now it's out in public, and you have it. You went ahead and went with the local safety road program, and the first thing that that program says is that you educate the community. That's what you're in it for. You now have it on your website. If you care to read that thing that's in your website net, it's asking you to go out and educate the public about a safety problem in your community. So please do that. And also coming up now is the burial grounds up there on top, up at the community hospital, up at the hospital. And so they're in record. And so now we're going to need to start looking at that up there also. At the Marine Hospital, people died up there. They ordered caskets up there, and it isn't part of the history. So please open your ears and take a look at what's going on here. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
I'll be talking. I know you heard that part. I'm on the wall, nine twenty eighth Street, Galena. I didn't plan to talk, but I do want to. So I wanted to say if Galena has so much disposable money to waste on a lawsuit, which you're wasting Galena dollars, okay, and you're giving them to a non-Galena resident, right? Um, how about you spend that money on our roads, our sidewalks, stuff that we need here in Galena, we're not getting. It's like you don't even care about the residents, but a non-resident, you're willing to go one hundred and fifty thousand dollars like that, and now you want to give more, right? You want to keep it going. We don't want that as residents of Galena. Will you please listen to the residents? I know Jerry has said, oh, it's not a problem with the roads. The road's safe. We just heard the road isn't safe. I've been on that road. I've been in the ambulance. We've gone on that road. It's not safe. So I'm just asking that you please listen to the Galena residents. We don't want this. And if you have that much money, please come fix my road, okay?
Okay.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything either, but you all look like fairly intelligent people, and I think you are known for a long time. I'm just going to quote a country song from years ago, and that is, what part of no don't you understand?
All right. You can do it quickly. There are fifteen minutes left.
Okay, well, and I don't live in the city.
State your name and your address.
Joe Byrne, one one zero five one West Cross Road, one mile outside the city limits. But I've lived in this area my entire life, and what's going on here is tearing me apart. To see you people want something that this town absolutely does not need, does not want, and it's just, I'm trying to get my emotions under control here as I say something here.
Joe, okay.
Well, I've sat on the sidelines a little bit too long. You know, I'm friends with most of the people in this room. I've known you forever, it seems like, and I just, I just can't get this. I can't get it. Um, the question gets asked over and over again, what's going on? I've read every letter to the editor. I've listened, tell me to friends on both sides of this issue. And the best, not the best, I think the worst thing I've heard, and I will not mention names, of course, but I sat, I stood out here in this parking lot during a parade last year, and I confronted somebody who was on the council at that time. And he was like a canned speech, talking about all the new revenue it was going to bring in, all the new tax dollars, how great it was going to be. Well, guess what? There's other ways to make revenue without ruining this beautiful town. And that intersection, as I've stated already, is already a concern. And now I'll quote my wife, who works out at Eagle Ridge yet. Um, she has days where she has trouble getting to work because of the extra traffic, maybe it's country fair weekend or whatever. Now take that times about what, ten or twenty on certain days when we're in the middle of tourist season? What are people going to do? That's about all I got. It wasn't very clear.
Thanks. I think we filled the fifteen minutes up with agenda. So before we get out of the system, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak briefly about anything else? We'll extend it for another three minutes. I mean, I think everybody said that wanting to speak asked for.
Brenda Holmes, five sixteen Dewey Avenue. Um, just a little, I mean, along with this, are we ever going to address parking in Galena? Ever? Do we just keep avoiding parking? People cannot get out of their cars. They just circle. They park in residential. We can't park at our houses. I know it's been a problem for fifty years, but maybe it's time we talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Does Julie, anybody else want to say briefly anything else besides these two items? Okay, thank you all. Let's move ahead then to public hearings. We have none tonight. The electric commission, we have none tonight. Let's move into consent agenda C A twenty-four dash seventeen. Do we have some other multiple auditors who can be read?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda C A twenty-four dash one seven.
Second. All right, we have a motion with the second on our procedural keeper. Any discussion or a bone of any of these? Okay. All right, you're in non-take roll call.
Johnson?
I'm sorry, yes.
Paper?
Yes.
Sagman?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Wehan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Pam?
Bernstein?
Because those two lights are not anymore.
I might have to technically go here.
What did she miss in the public?
You know where they have them.
I'll try her again.
Hi there. I think we lost you. Okay. Okay, well, we'll put you back on speaker and let us know.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion with the second to pass consent agenda C A twenty-four day seventeen. Did you have any questions on any of that listed in under that?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, so we're about ready to take roll call on that motion, and I think Mary Betson started it already.
I did.
All right.
But I'm on Bernstein.
Um, yes.
And?
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move. We have the unfinished business. We have none tonight. Let's get into new business. Under item number twenty-four C dash zero three five two, it's a presentation by Wesley of the Orlando Financial Report for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, and tonight, I believe we have Matt with us, all right, and you want to put his up on the?
This is for the, yeah, this is for me.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matt Sheila, partner with Wipley. I had a handout that Mark passed around, so I'm just going to go over a few key highlights of the twenty-four audit, so please, if you have questions. Um, what I'd like is to give a nice summary of the audit rather than all the detail that's in the books, because it can get a little overwhelming and a little confusing, so hopefully you'd like the presentation. So as first, you turn to the first page as the auditor report. Be issued a clean, unmodified opinion. Keep in mind, the city is on a modified cash basis of accounting. Clean opinion passing grade. We also have to do an audit opinion on the city's internal controls. We did have one segregation of duties issues with a bank reconciliation review, a very minor comment there. Let's turn to the next page. A few things to note through the audit, so this would be page three. The city's deposits are covered either by F D I C or pledged collateral. That just means everything's properly secured and invested. Uh, the city has an I M R F pension plan. Um, that liability actually is an asset at the end of the year was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand compared to last year was a two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar liability. There was very significant investment returns, and again, this is valued as a calendar year. There was one point two million of investment income, and roughly you guys have about twelve million of investments at the state to pay those liabilities. They don't, they're not held here. They're held at the state. Uh, you did pay down about one point five million of principal on your debt in the current year, have seven hundred, seven hundred thousand due next year. Next page. So this is the governmental revenues. Uh, so this excludes all of the water sewer, those sort of activities. I like to show this as a year-over-year comparison, um, very comparable year-over-year. The only thing that you see that really went down were your intergovernmental revenues. Those are a lot of your state reimbursements as far as state sales tax, income tax, replacement tax, those sort of things. While that did go down as a percentage of the whole, the investment income did go up. So on the, on the left-hand side, you'll see investment income, enough about five percent. We're seeing that across a lot of our governments that we audit, investment returns that the four-year deposits have improved. Next page. This is the governmental expenditures, again, year-over-year. Um, really, this tells you how your spender dollars, so you can kind of see year-over-year. Of course, as you do projects, capital outlay, which is a, was a large chunk in the career, that does go up quite a bit. Uh, but just to kind of see year-over-year, you know, public safety and just the general operations of the city always are the most, the largest expenditure. Let's turn to the next page. This is the water sewer and some other statistics. This is on a four-year comparison. I'll continue to build this, probably, probably a seven-year comparison, but just to kind of give you a little idea, the top line are the operating revenues. Again, if you step back, this is your garbage, water, sewer, shovel, parking, the terminal hall, and the swimming pool. So top line are your operating revenues. That middle line is the net income. The bottom line is the, is the operating income. Of course, you guys rely a lot on that, uh, that sewer sales tax helps. That's just shown as a, a non-operating income because that's how taxes are shown for those types of funds. Last page is the I M R F funded ratio. So after we sit here in twenty twenty-four, you can see that the plan is funded at a hundred and one percent, so the fully funded plan. And over that five-year timeframe, it's, it's been pretty consistently fully funded. I M R F has had a significant investment account over the past few years. The city's benefited from that, so. That's a real quick snapshot of the audit. Happy to be here tonight. Are there questions? Have them. You can also work through Mark to get, get them to me, and I'd be happy to, um, if anything comes up, I'd be happy to respond. So, any questions?
Questions from the council, which is, thanks.
Hi. Look, um, first, I just wanted to say thank you because I know this was, this was timely, and that wasn't the previous case, so I appreciate that, and I would say thank you. Um, I had a question. If, is this full report or is this even snapshot available on our website, or can it be?
I did email Mark that document, yes.
And it is for the public?
I, I, not, it's not other yet, no. The full audit is on the website.
The full audit is on the?
You put this on.
Is on the website. Great. And then just for future, um, because you're done, and that was great, but for the future, I would love to see the use of it, since we have an audience here, and sometimes we do, to go ahead and see the use of the big screen so that people can follow along with what we're looking at. I mean, it'd just be easy to do. So if anyone wants to get, they're welcome to it.
Okay. Thank you for your, your company from the prompt service that the city has and the help that you've given us, and if anybody else have anything, it'll get that maybe on slides next year or so. Um, saying that, uh, you can go.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, then, let's move ahead to item number twenty-four C dash zero three five three as discussion, the possible action. of possible action on a recapture agreement with the B D K group LLC for sewer construction costs. Do I have a motion on this one? Any motion on this?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the recapture agreement with the B T K group LLC for sewer construction costs, twenty-four C dash zero three five three.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item twenty-four, C day zero three five three. Any discussion on this recapture? Everybody understands that, that the cost is being borne by the original owner, and if anybody hopes on sewer afterwards, then he can ask them a certain portion. Okay. Any other questions, Pam? Any questions?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and Mary Beth take the motion on that item number.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-four, C day zero three five four. It's a second reading and possible approval of an ordinance amending the zoning map for nine eight oh eight U S Highway twenty west from limited agricultural to planned commercial. I have a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I will approve the second reading and possible, or approve the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map for ninety-three oh eight U S Highway twenty west from limited agriculture to planned commercial, item twenty-four C zero three five four.
Second.
Okay, then move second item number twenty-four, C day zero three five five. For any discussion on this rezoning map? Okay, all right. Take a little call, Mary Beth.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-four, C days zero three five five. It's a second reading and possible approval of an ordinance to annex the one point three four acre parcel at nine eight zero eight U S Highway twenty west. I have a motion on this.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to annex the one point thirty-four acre parcel at nine eight zero eight U S Highway twenty west. Item number twenty-four, C dash zero three five five.
Second.
All right, then move second item number twenty-four, C days zero three five five. Any discussion on this? All right, take a look, Mary Beth.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-four, C days zero three five six. Discussion of possible action on a contract for Highway twenty traffic signal maintenance with waiver, waiver tronics and A G Electric. So a special motion on that. All the person Jerry Wester.
Make a motion to approve the contract for Highway twenty traffic signal maintenance with waiver tronics and A G Electric. Twenty-four C dash zero three five six.
We had a motion of the eighth and second date. I have number twenty-four, C days zero three five six. Discussion on this. Uh, everybody understand, uh, we're talking about the traffic lights and a couple intersections on twenty on Spring Street. They're operated with sensors in the ground. Those sensors deteriorate over time, so what we want to do is computerize the timing of them. Close above the ground so that they work properly. Right now, we have a lot of problems with them. That's what this is for. Any other questions on that?
I don't know. They're like a radar, radar system, and how would that work in the wintertime? Is that weather or anything will affect that?
I can't say for certain, uh, and at least this equipment do get iced over, but this is what the Department of Transportation is going to recommend. They're doing.
Yeah, and, uh, don't worry, the Department of Transportation will help pay for this.
Yeah.
Right. And hopefully, over time, we can get the rest done too.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, did you want the amount in that? You want to do it? Sure, okay. Just amend the, the motion with the monetary rate that you made, uh, seventy-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend my initial approval and add that it would cost seventy-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars.
Second.
Is that still standing with the second? Okay.
Yes.
All right, does everybody understand? Totally. Okay, take a little call, Mary Beth.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. That's what we had then, item number twenty-four, C days zero three five seven. Discussion of possible action on a emergency contract with Louis Trenching Service in an amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred thirty dollars for repair to flood damaged Green Street Plaza. I have a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor? I vote we approve action on an emergency contract with Louis Trenching Service in an amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred thirty dollars for repairs of flood damaged Green Street Plaza.
Second.
Item twenty-four C zero three five seven.
Okay, you second that.
I did.
Cindy Johnson, okay. Discussion on that?
I, I just have one minute point. Uh, I get the timing of council meetings and the bidding process, but it'd be nice to approve this up before they already started working on it. Um, that's, they won't come up.
We were walking over here earlier, and I was actually just going to, to thank them, because we, as Cindy noticed, that that they were doing the work, uh, ahead of the approval, but I think it was something that it, it had to happen regardless. So, once we got the, once we got the approval for, for what it, what it would cost, it needed to happen as soon as possible.
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, it's red shirt as an emergency repair of the industry, it's been down for so long. Like, started, the bedropped out, made it a lot, yeah, so. We had to get it done. Okay, then let's move ahead, all the state board has to.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead, item number twenty-four, C days zero three five eights. Discussion of possible action on a contract for the Dodge Street Utility Improvement Project. We have some type of motion, all the person can win it.
Make a motion to approve the contract on the Dodge Street Utility Improvement Project to Louis Trenching in the amount of seven hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars. Item number twenty-four C dash zero three five eight.
Second.
All right, so move second item number twenty-four, C days zero three five eight. Discussion on this. The, uh, do you have something to say?
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the Dodge Street project deals with, uh, the new water line, new sewer line, and other hydrant put in up there, and then, uh, the curb, and then paved and over all that. We've had tremendous, quite a few breaks up there. The semi took out fire hydrant, et cetera. And people up there having problems, and had problems for quite some time. So, we got put in the new water, the new sewer, and that's what this, uh, agenda was about. We sent out for bids, we got two bids. Uh, Louise's other one was from Fisher's Estimating, which was higher. So, anybody else have any discussion on this, or what they want to say or anything? Okay, take a little call on that, uh.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then on item number twenty-four, C days zero three five nine. Discussion of possible action on the purchase of four shade structures for the pool from Game Time slash Cunningham Recreation in the amount of thirty-two thousand ten dollars. Got motion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I hope we approve the purchase of four shade structures for the pool from Game Time Cunningham Recreation in amount of thirty-one thousand and ten dollars. Twenty-four C zero three five nine.
Okay, Jerry, that was a misprint of thirty-one. The actual cost is thirty-two thousand and ten dollars.
Thirty-two.
I know, that's what was in the port, one page, that one, and then the last one's got it, that, that was that. And discussion on this is, uh, pretty basic. It's in the budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five. We had to take some dead trees out, so there's not much shade out there, so they were asking, people were asking for something to do. And this is why we went ahead. Got it through this company, because they've been working with us on other items, and, uh, their, their product is very, you know, Cindy.
Can I second the motion?
Yeah, sure. I thought, did you ever?
Did you? Oh, I wasn't sure, I was, I just, long as we got.
Are any other discussion on the shade, uh?
I'll second what you were saying about, about the shade being, being needed and appreciated, and I also appreciate the fact that, and I think it's, it's good to point out that this was already approved in the budget, so this was already something we knew was coming, but it's coming now, so that's.
That's good, that's good. Anything else on this? All right, take roll call.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-four, C days zero three six zero, it's a warrant, so I have any, uh, motion for the bill.
Make a motion to approve the warrants, item number twenty-four, C dash zero three six zero.
Second.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second to pay the warrants under item number twenty-four, C days zero three six zero. Was there any questions on any of the bills? All right, here none, uh, let's, uh, go ahead and take roll call on the warrants.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tagmeyer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then, item number twenty-four, C days zero three six one. All the persons comment. All the person, Pam Bernstein.
Um, yeah, just one comment. I really appreciate the opportunity to, uh, participate remotely, so thank you for that.
Thank you that you can do that. Okay, thanks. Okay, this, this will be the all person, Cindy Tagmeyer.
Um, I have a, a few items. Um, one, and I just keep forgetting to request this, but I'd like to request that the council has nameplates, so, just so that we ask everyone for their name and their address, just that you might not know us. And I'm Cindy T., um, in case you were wondering. So I think that would be helpful and easy to do. And then also, in the, in the financial, um, in the department reports, it, I just saw that it was reported that there was a sound study done for the pickleball on complex, and that it would comply with our noise ordinance. And I'd love to just see that, um, see that study, and I would also like to hear from the committee when these things happen, so that, that we have, we have a chance to understand what has happened, when it has happened, and what they found. Um, in that same vein, um, it, it was stated in the department head reports on, um, August fifteenth that our comprehensive plan with Pauso Levine was started with an initial meeting, so in the same, in the same idea. I would love an update on that, and some advance notice of when there will be community involvement, and when our planning commission will start working on that. Um, sorry, almost done. Um, our next, my next thing is, I just want to remind, um, the folks that attended, thank you for speaking out, but there there are two open session items after the exec, the executive session, and you can wait outside, and then you'll be called back in at the close of the session, so that we close at the executive session, and it'll be open back up. Um, and one more reminder, there are open positions, um, for, one for the zoning board, one for the H P C. Applications are due September thirtieth, and also, if you're interested in running for council, um, you could find out all the information at cityofgalena.org. These are time-sensitive opportunities.
You got it, kid?
Yeah, I'm done.
All the person Cindy Johnson.
Oh, just, I agree with everything Cindy, he's done.
All the person Jerry Keeper.
Not taking a nice shot.
All the person Katie Winn.
Um, yeah, I'm just, we talked about it, uh, I don't know, several months ago, but I don't know if we could explore another option. Talked about doing something for the paid parking lots for people who live here. Um, there's a new restaurant open, there's the winery parking lot, some other parking lots, um, whether it's a parking pass for locals. Uh, we talked about it in the spirit of how like Geneva does it, so if we could just kick that back up, and you're, I thought about it today, I parked over there, I did not pay for parking, so I get it taken, I get it taken, but, um, I do think that we need to do more for the local people who want to come down and support when it's not so crazy downtown, so.
Okay, all the person Jerry Wester.
I'd like to say thank Jen, Mark, and all the city staff for an outstanding job on the audit. That went very, very smoothly. Uh, the city's financially in good shape, and, and did a great job. Thank you very much. And also about parking. We've added a lot, a lot more parking than we have in a long time, but I still think we should look down on Licker Street behind the garage down there, where we could add possibly fifty-five, sixty more parking spots, because that place fills up down there pretty fast. Just what we added in the last couple of years, but I think that would be a good place to, uh, add more cars down there.
Okay, then let's move ahead to item number twenty-four, C days zero three six two. City administrators report.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple items. First, uh, last minute, I did mention the water tower being painted out of industrial park. You may have noticed the two blue tanks up by the middle school, so those who put in the service today, they are both water storage and pressures, so we're kind of replicating the tower, since the tower is out of commission as of today for that painting. So we expect the painting to be completed in probably about the next three weeks. And you will see the new city logo, not the new city logo, city logo on that tower, it's gone. Uh, secondly, uh, follow-up on all the person Tagmeyer with pickleball, and on the committee and I, we have been working on a, uh, thorough report to try to bring the council up to speed, and expect to be presenting that at the next meeting, including the sound study. And that's it?
Hey, thank. So we had that twenty-four, C days zero three six three, a marriage report, and I too want to thank our financial staff and the officers, and, uh, the officer helping with the audits, and everything went very well this year. Um, and, uh, as was mentioned, uh, we're going into executive session. There's gonna be a couple items that we'll keep voting on after we come out, so, um, we'll come and get everybody eventually come back in. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion on item number twenty-four, C days zero three zero three six four, motion for executive session for the items listed. Go ahead, uh, Katie Winn.
Make a motion to go into executive session, including section two, C six, sale or lease of public property, section two, C eleven. An incredible remedial litigation, section two, C twenty-one. Item number twenty-four, C dash zero three six four.
Second.
All right, so we've said it's only executive sessions for items, so it's, it's all take roll call, Mary Beth.
Yes.